671 Willow Lane accessory structure located at 671 Willow Lane. If Brian is shipping, is requesting area variances to allow side setback less than what is required and to allow the placement of an accessory structure to be near to the front property line than the rear line of the main residence associated with the construction of a 500 square foot deep ash wood frame structure and a 46 acre parcel having SPL number 065 point one three dash two dash eleven located in an R3 single family residential district under sections 350 dash 12 and 350 dash 36 of the code of the town of Webster.
Hey, Brian.
Hello. How are you tonight?
Good. Want to present the changes that you have made to the board?
Actually, just going back to last meeting, the last thing we were talking about is the rendering of what things were going to look like. So, the packet that I submitted, we can jump right to page 33, I believe. And I think it's one.
Right there.
Yep.
That's not showing up on these screens.
Oh, wait a second.
Is that on earlier?
It's on that screen.
Can't see that. You got a mirror?
I'll rotate the column.
I'll turn this one.
There you go.
We'll rotate the building.
Okay, I mean, I see the image that we're looking at at least. So, for the board, my pages don't have page numbers. It is in the middle. It's this image here. All right.
Yeah, so if you're thumbing through it, there is the June, I think it's June 11th presentation. If you go through all of those images, then it goes to the rendering. Once again, I'm Adam Cummings, helping out my friend Brian on this application. While you're looking, I did look at the old minutes, so I apologize for the ask when I didn't introduce myself, so. Find it?
Yes. I mean, does everybody have a copy of it?
I was gonna try and find Mr. Artuso some time to find the question.
Yeah, the screen is not working.
So, the one on the bottom is, it shows the porch addition that was discussed at the last meeting as well as the accessory structure. We don't have quite the skill set to overlay them with Photoshop or Illustrator or whatever is used to get it on there, so it's just a cutout, but tried to show it in both of them. And that's the softening up of it with the siding matching the two. The color, right now is a light gray because he can't or doesn't want to match the 1962 green color. So, there is a plan, if there is a budget sometime in the future, to eventually change it, but this is a neutral enough color and it's not too contrasting to the neighborhood to put that one in there. So, they kind of blend together. But once again, the rendering down below does not show all the windows. Didn't get into that level of detail, but that's why I hope images will give them to show that. So, on the bottom, he's not looking to propose to take any windows out. Oh, now you lost all of it. So, if you're looking at the paper copies, just to clarify that bottom one, other than the porch addition, he's not looking to make any changes to the main structure of the house, it's just a joint chair. That's just a rendering that didn't take... The level of detail to do that needs a licensed architect to do that type of detail.
So, out of curiosity, and I was not at the October meeting, I did have the opportunity to listen through the meeting itself, but I was at the meeting prior, I believe it was a September meeting, where we talked about it. We talked about softening this up, we talked about trying to get this fit within a residential neighborhood, and I'm looking at elevations that we received back in July, and I'm looking at the rendering. I can't see a difference between what was submitted in July and the rendering.
So, the main change was the siding originally was the vertical that you'd see in more of a commercial building. It's still metal siding, but this one's horizontal to match it. It's still the, instead of a four-inch siding like you'd see on a residential, so his has got the nine-inch. So, yeah, these were materials that weren't allowed to be added at the meeting because we were gonna bring them at the same day, but we are looking to do the wider horizontal orientation of the metal siding. Light fixtures just didn't make it on the rendering, but there would be light fixtures above the doors, but they didn't make it onto that one.
You're still maintaining the 20-foot?
Yes.
Interior height?
Well, it's the roof height, so he's maximized his footprint with height and the square footage of what the town code allows. Yeah.
Now, is the 20-foot the, to the outside, to the top of the peak?
No, that's actually to the midpoint of the, so the roof line, the way the town code reads is to the midpoint of that gable, so it's not the peak.
How tall physically is the actual tile's going to be?
I think it's 21 feet four inches.
Yes.
21 foot four. So, an original rendering had it at 23 feet eight, but it was recalculated, it's gonna be 21 feet four inches, but once again, that's due to the, meeting the town code height of 20 feet measured to the midpoint of that sloping ridge. And this one, the rendering is drawn to scale with the perspective view of what it would look like to each other, to the two buildings.
There's no perspective.
Well, this perspective of what you're looking at here.
Oh, okay.
No, I don't have a perspective view from an airplane coming at it. This is from a...
It's an aerial, I'm just talking about a perspective.
So, the perspective is from the road. You don't have an aerial or an ortho image perspective.
I understand.
Okay.
Other questions from the board?
I just got to talk to him. We've been going over this number for five months, whatever it is, and the board's been requesting different things every time. Renderings, samples, suggested height difference, exterior appearance, things like that. Have we ever noise gotten what we've been asking for or suggested? Is there some reason for kind of sidestepping some of our requests?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any sidestepping, but I am following town code, kind of the, what I presented for the, I think it's 43 pages, is I'm following the way that town wants me to do things. I didn't have to get elevation drawings yet, but I did go out and do that on my own just to get ready, and then I did hand them over, and it's not stuff that's required at this point for something that's less than $20,000 to construct.
But to the point, if it was a code, you wouldn't be here. You'd have your building permitted to be up. So, you haven't provided everything that we've asked because you're the one asking for relief, so we're trying to do our best job in weighing whether that request merits that belief. So, it's not like you've done everything that the code asks you to. You're asking for relief from some of the code requirements, so that's why we've asked for...
I'm asking for relief from location. Yeah, it's actually two variances. I would like to fine tune that one back in. I appreciate and recognize that the town is trying to impose architectural standards that don't exist, opinions of what you'd like it to look like, but I would like to point out that this is the Zone Board of Appeals trying to find the minimum variance required, not necessarily denial or an acceptance or approval, but you hear about its proximity to the back line of the house and the side lot line. I understand you're trying to look at it in terms of the seater evaluation and the area variance part of community character, but once again, it's on the variance and the town code allows it. So, I disagree that it's been sidestepping for an application that, the first meeting was pointed out, he's trying to see if he can get the variance approval to actually do the project without investing too much time and effort.
Adam, I appreciate that.
Yep.
And I don't think this board, I don't think it's lost on this board that the variance is for the location, but this board does have the opportunity to take into consideration the impact on the neighborhood itself, which is why we, the board, has been asking for softening of the structure to help it fit into a residential neighborhood over the course of the multiple meetings that we've had. And so, with that, if there's any other comments from the board at this point, if not, I'm gonna open it up to public, if there's any public comments. All right, with that, I'm opening it up to the public for public comments. Please note that there is a five-minute limit on individual comments. With that, come on up, please state your name and address.
My name is Jan Armentrod. I live directly across the street at 670 Willow Lane and have attended every one of these meetings but one. I am dismayed that this information that's being shown right now was not available on the website as late as today, so there was no chance for me to make comment. I am the person, as I said, who would be most affected. I have discussed with Mr. Artuso and several other people that there are certainly things that could, as the person walking out of her front door every day, make this a possibility of a project, certainly the height and the fact that it looks, you know, in the manner you call a state is paid, and that looks like an extra garage to me, and there's already commercial equipment around the property on a very routine basis. I had specifically suggested that the building be rotated so that the garage door entrance would open to the driveway. I see even that sort of a moderate change that could make a project workable. There's no room for any sort of compromise in this. If we drive the neighborhood, and I believe all of you have maybe multiple times, appreciate the amount of work that you have put into this, that's a commercial-looking building in a very residential neighborhood. These houses are now $300,000 houses. They're like the smaller family room, bath and a half, two and a half bath bedrooms. Well, the neighborhood mostly built in the 60s and very early 70s, and we watch preserved it. My fears amongst other things with this sort of thing is that if a person operating business, I go home, in one instance gets an approval for this building, every other tradesman in the neighborhood is going to have a request before you, and before you know it, the neighborhood looks like older parts of the village of Webster. I have made my concerns repeatedly to you guys. I don't see softening there. Like I said, I don't see the building rotated. I see a garage, a big garage, a tall garage, and I would ask to that, some other consideration be given if it's such an ideal building for the neighborhood. Put it out on the other side of the house, plenty of room there, and then I'm not looking at the commercial equipment plus the garage that is routinely stored on that side of the property. And again, I thank you for the amount of work and time that you folks have given of this. Thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak for or against the project? Any comments from the public? With that, bring back to the board a final comments or questions that the board may have. And I'm gonna recommend that we move forward with a decision at today's meeting. We've gone through this process multiple times, multiple iterations. I recommend that we move forward with a decision unless anybody here disagrees. Okay.
I guess I still have a concern with the height. Because the building is not located where the code indicates that the building should be located, I drove that entire neighborhood from Holt Room to 250 throughout the past weeks and did not see another, other than a barn on 250, did not see another... It's in essence a two-story building without a middle floor, a two-story accessory structure in any of that building development. And to me, that's the harshest part of it is because it's much closer to the road than it typically would be based on what the accessory structure code states. Is there any way to soften the look of it by reducing the height by five feet or seven feet or? It just, I know Emmanuel Scholz, I know, but it's still much more storage than we have right now, and it would make it just less, if very well.
So, can I post? Well, first I want to point one thing that keeps being...
Can you turn off the microphone, please, so we can have...
Yeah, sorry about that. One thing that keeps being brought up, and I'll add to Brian's part, I've known Brian for 24 years now, since we went to college together, and he has been a delight since electrician that whole time. He does not wholly run his business out of there, but ever since we were teenagers, he does, as an electrician business, act as an electrician there. He does not operate his business out of it. There are times, he doesn't even have a truck that has the business name on it. There are a lot of other ones that go in, so I just wanted to point that out, that he's not gonna operate a commercial business out of this. The other part in terms of what board member Bolo just asked about is to point out with the way the code is, it's not drawn on here, but if it was placed in the backyard where it could be to be code compliant, it just shifts it back to 10 or 12 feet back and seven feet over, so the height of it by the code that's allowed would only diminish it by about a foot and a half in terms of the view that you're seeing there. Because he does have room in the back, well, it's not a back corner because he's a corner lot, so he's got two side yards. So, he does have room back there, but it's because of the electric service is why he's electing to put it here. So, in terms of the height, while I do appreciate the points you're making on that, the code does allow it to be in that converging of the two side lots, and in terms of a height impact, while no other buildings have it, it is possible to put it in there and still receive a building permit. But to the point of Brian answering the question of your request to minimize it, which once again is not a variance request of the height because he is meeting code, I'll ask him if he'd entertain it. I mean, I am looking to, I am looking to maximize my storage. So, things started off one way, and then when I found out that the way I wanted to do it was an accessory structure, I looked at those, that town codes for an accessory structure, and that's, this is what I've come up with. Location is, makes sense on the property, and I think with the metal siding flipped horizontal and the existing metal siding that's on the primary structure is eight inches, and the new metal siding is gonna be nine inches. So, I think with the, I believe it's about 30, 32 feet from the existing garage to the side, nearest side of the accessory structure, you're never gonna notice that difference in one inch for the metal siding. So, I think it's gonna blend right in with the existing structure and, the exist, the south wall of the existing structure that faces Mill Creek Run is, it has two windows. Other than that, it's 22 and a half feet of metal siding.
So, I'd like to just note that this is a type two. No further reviews necessary under SEGA pursuant to section 617.5, 617.5 of the environmental code. With that, it's, looking for a motion, I guess, or a...
Looking for a side?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Don.
Okay, Mr. Short.
Hi.
Mr. Havel.
Hi.
Mrs. Bolo.
Hi.
Mr. Santola.
Hi.
Mr. Lang.
Hi.
So, now a motion for the variance.
Let me actually have to tell you, a neighbor across the street asked that the garage door be located towards the existing garage. Would you be willing to do that?
With the, the reason the structure is 20 by 25 is so that my boat will fit in. If the garage door is on the other side, I don't have enough room to swing the boat. It's not... Yep, that's it.
Excuse me, in the past, it has been sent at this meeting at the boat...
No, public session is done. Over at this point. So, Nina, does we want to go through the findings? Do you need to do a motion for the variance? I guess, print out if you want to read it in or... For 671 Willow Lane accessory structure located at 671, this is for an area variance to allow a side setback less than what is required and to allow the placement of the accessory structure to be nearer to the front property line than the rear line of the main residence associated with the construction of a 500 square foot deep ash wood frame structure on a 0.46 acre parcel having SPL number 065 point one three dash two dash eleven located in R3 single family residential district under sections 350 dash 12, 350 dash 36 of the code of the town of Webster.
Do you want to set in a score?
I believe we have. Go back through the board.
Now, I found the motion. It was approved at five feet from the north lot line and 43.4 feet from the front or east lot line.
Okay. Oops, sorry. All right. We haven't done the findings yet to do that. All right. So, findings that we have to go through, kind of standard, is this request out of character in the neighborhood? Based on all the conversations that I have heard from this board over multiple meetings, this request is out of character for this neighborhood. There will not be a detriment created to nearby properties. You know, again, from hearing from this board, you know, there is potential visual impacts to nearby neighbor, nearby neighbor properties. Benefit is not achievable by any other method. It is not, the applicant is attempting to get all his materials and equipment stored inside to meet requirements of the town code. One way of doing that, one of the only ways to do it is to provide a structure to be able to put his equipment and materials inside and build a structure. This request is not substantial. This request does meet the town code from a size standpoint, but not from a location standpoint. There is no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. I agree with that, other than the first two items previously identified, out of character of the neighborhood and detriment created to nearby properties. Difficulty was not self-created, and it's not. I mean, at the end of the day, the applicant wants, has, has equipment he's been able to acquire over time and needs to be able to store that, not a self-created element, and this is not, this is not a desirable change.
Mr. Chair, I mean, you do mean that this is a self-created difficulty?
Sure. Thank you, yes.
Further, if you could, I think it would be helpful to include some of the facts of the project we've defined and result in undesirable change. The board has noted the height of the shuckers and materials that are used having industrial look. I would suggest that you incorporate some of the specific facts into the finding.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the character of the neighborhood, the neighborhood is a typical residential Typical siding throughout the neighborhood, dormers, maximum height of structures are typically two-story structures. The structure that was presented before this board is a metal-sided pole barn structure, low roof, low slope roof, no dormers, very flat front face, very industrial looking. These were the materials that were presented to this board over the course of the last six months with very little modifications made to accommodate any, any adjustments. I think that, I think that about covers it.
One more thing, Mr. Chair, if I understood the board correctly, the request is substantial in so much as it's the combination of the size and materials used coupled with the reducing the setback from the front. Would that be accurate?
That would be accurate, yes. So, I guess with that, make a motion, make a motion for a variance, for area variances at 671 Willow Lane accessory structure with a, with a side setback of five feet and a front setback of, is it 43 feet? Is that right?
43.4.
43.4 feet. Do I have a second?
Is your motion to approve or deny the application of the area variance, Mr. Chair?
To deny.
Second.
I agree.
Mr. Santola?
I agree, to deny.
The motion is to deny, so responsible for...
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. Havel?
Mr. Havel?
Aye.
Mr. Leyden?
Aye.
Brian, unfortunately, you have the response from the board. Your application for area variance has been denied for the structure. I believe it's a six-month period before you can come back before the board. Is that correct, Josh?
One year.
One year, unless there's substantial changes, is that correct?
Correct. I'd like to correct that, I believe you can't come back ever unless there is a substantial change to the application to the zoning board.
Do you reckon that our code is one, one year?
One year, okay.
Unless there's some meaningful change that would indicate...
Right, understood. Well, thank you, the board, for all your consideration on this. Obviously disappointed with the decision, but thank you for all the time, man.
Appreciate it, thank you.